February nineteenth, twenty twenty five. My name is Johanna Newman and as the Vice Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I'm calling this meeting to order at six thirty four P M. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty one and extended by chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town's website calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted, however, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for economic hardship reasons or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, please unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and then return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I am here at last.
Welcome, Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
Thank you, Lawrence Clutz.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
Present.
Doug Marshall has notified us that he will be absent today. Johanna Newman, I am here, and Karen Winter.
I'm here.
Thank you. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak, and after speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during the general comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when determined appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to speak by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you've joined the meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address, and put yourself back on mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. All right, we have a number of items on tonight's agenda, and it starts with minutes. So I believe we have two sets of minutes to consider and yeah, I hope folks have had a chance to review those minutes. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes, or does someone want to make a motion? Starting with Pam, can we do these together as one motion, or do we need to treat them separately?
I would treat them separately.
Great, so let's start with the minutes from our meeting on October thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Questions, comments, corrections? Otherwise, could I get a motion to approve? Can you use the raise hand function? Great, Jesse?
Uh, yeah, I move to accept those minutes as they're.
Great.
Second.
Who was that, Lawrence? Thank you, Lawrence. Okay, second from Lawrence. Um, any discussion? All right, um, then let's do a vote. And again, we need to go board member by board member if I remember correctly, right? All right, uh, Bruce Colton.
Um, I'm going to abstain. I did not attend that meeting.
Thank you, Fred Hartwell.
I.
Lawrence Clutz.
I, Clutz.
Clutz, thank you. Jesse Major.
I.
I'm an I, and Karen?
I.
Thank you. Um, all right, minutes are approved. The next set of minutes is from January eighth, twenty twenty five. Any discussion, or if not, can I get a motion to approve? Excellent, Bruce?
Um, I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Bruce. Jesse?
A second.
Any discussion? All right, then we'll take a roll call vote. Bruce Colton?
I.
Fred Hartwell?
I.
Lawrence Clutz?
I.
Jesse Major?
I.
I'm an I, and Karen Winter?
Um, oops, I abstained because I was absent.
Thank you very much. All right. The next part of our meeting is the public comment section, so um the first thing I'm gonna do is just say the names of the people in attendance for public comment and then open it up. So um, present for tonight's meet, there are five members of the public who are present for tonight's meeting. Um, I'm gonna read their names as I see them on my screen. They are George Karas, Hilda Greenbaum, Ian Tapscott, Jade Larson, and Maura Keane. And I think some of those attendees are here for the uh, public hearing. But um, if there are members of the public who would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, please uh, use the raise hand function now. I'm gonna give it just another couple of seconds, and then we'll move on. All right, seeing no hand, um, I'll presume that if folks have public comments, they are germane to tonight's agenda, and we'll address them during the public comment period for those items. Next order of business is our public hearing and a site plan review. Pam, are we good to start, or do we need to wait?
Um, let's see, that was noticed for six thirty five, and at six forty two, you're good to go.
Beautiful. So um, it's six forty two P M. In accordance with the provisions of MGL chapter forty eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised, and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR twenty twenty five zero seven PV squared um, at seven forty two Main Street. This is a request for a site plan review approval to amend previous site plan review approvals. Um, and it's SPR two thousand one dash zero 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 two that allowed for the construction of a building addition and SPR nineteen ninety eight zero zero one six that allowed the construction of the parking lot, and to request approval to install a one hundred and ten point two five kilowatt solar canopy in the parking lot, a pad mount transformer at the rear of the building, an eight hundred amp electrical service upgrade, and minor changes to the site plan. And this is fifteen A dash twelve and fifteen A dash one oh five in the RG zoning district. Um, so at the start of this hearing, um, I'd like to first make hear any board member disclosures about this project. Any board member disclosures? Great, then let's move on to the applicant presentation. So let's, it's possible that some of the applicants were over in the attendees. Have we moved them over to the presenter?
I moved Ian over. Ian, is there anyone else that should come over with you?
Nope, it's just me.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Ian. We'd love to hear your presentation.
All right, great. Thanks for having me. Um, so as I understand it, I can share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna open that up. And windows. Okay, can you all see this?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Okay, um. Hi, I'm Ian Tapscott. I'm with PV Squared. As was mentioned, um, our application is to amend to previously uh, approved site plan reviews. And our amendment, what we are proposing is a hundred and ten point two five kilowatt uh, solar parking canopy. Um, this will go over uh, the existing parking lot. There will be no change, all the, all the uh, impervious surface that we're adding is covering all uh, surface, ground surface that's already impervious. Um, so we're not really changing any hydrology on site. Traffic patterns will not be required to change. Um, parking will not be reduced. Um, this is a uh, you know, fi- five footings will be installed along the middle of the parking area, some parking space, individual parking spaces might be reduced slightly, maybe twelve to twenty inches. Um, but the number of parking spaces will not be reduced. We've gone over this proposal with um with the folks who do, uh, the folks who will do, be doing our excavation, um, are the folks who do snow removal for the J C A already. They uh, have approved this plan as not interfering with their ability to do snow removal. We've also reviewed the plan with the fire department um, who have approved that this will not uh, jeopardize their ability to access um, the building in the case of a fire. So, yeah, the, the canopy is um it covers, is the total square footage is five thousand two hundred fifty nine square feet, so that's appro- approximately a hundred and thirty feet long, forty feet deep, and at its highest, it's twenty feet high, twenty and a half feet high. And the pad mounted transformer will go right here, which is a, the back uh, the northwest corner of the building. There's already some utility stuff that's there, I believe they're compressors. Um, and they'll be removed and, and the util- the transformer pad will be slightly further out from the building, but still behind the sidewalk. And I think that's it for my initial. I can show some pictures of what this type of um, canopy looks like if anyone would like to see that.
Sure, why not?
Okay.
If it's, if it's easy.
Yep. It sure is. Just get him up here. So this is a a shot of some, of a much larger canopy, but um you know, depth wise, it's about the same. It's two rows of cars and height, uh, it looks like it's about the same, you know, twenty feet up on the high end and about fourteen feet on the low end. Our proposed design has a total of five vertical piers, so it's probably lengthwise, it's probably about half of what is pictured here. And this is from a high school in Ridgefield, Jersey or Connecticut.
Got it. Okay, so this is like a sense of a canopy, but the one that the J C A will be a little bit smaller and like
It'll be smaller. It is this, this is a picture from the manufacturer's website of a project that was is the same model of uh, structure.
Great.
Um, so I guess I should, I could open up the site plan again.
Sure, why don't we, why don't we move on to the site visit report, and then we'll move on to questions from the board? So um, is there someone who went on the site, board members, is there someone who, yeah, Bruce, would you give us site visit report?
Well, I was gonna say that uh, it could be either Fred or I, the two of us were there. So Fred, why don't I uh, give a brief uh, additional uh, report, and you can add what I what I miss. What Ian says is uh, what we saw. Uh, there um, Nate was there along with another person from PV Squared, the contractors. What we should note is that the Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions on this project. There is wetlands involved, as we can see, and there's a wetland boundary that's noted there. So uh, as far as drainage, uh, it's, you know, would be of concern here, that we, I think we can safely uh, assume that the, the Conservation Commission have uh, looked carefully at uh, what is necessary so far as that is concerned. But in, in, in principle, the, as the site plan we see now, the uh, the, the, the low side is the, the, is, is the south side, which is where the hand is. That's where it's dripping. Um, what we noticed is that um that area of the parking and, and, and uh, and, and driveway pavement is asphalt. Um, the asphalt changes to T R G or something of that sort about the middle of the array, and so uh, on the other side of the array, the uh, the parking is T R G, but the um, I thought rather intelligently, the uh, the, the, the the array is, is dumping snow and dumping water onto the consolidated area of the pavement, and then presumably it's draining in a pattern that's acceptable to the Conservation Commission. I think that's mostly, I, the, where the vault is, there's also some uh, um inverters and various other equipment that's on the backside of the building just adjacent to the vault, so there's some material, exterior material that's gonna be mounted on the building. Um, it's what normally happens in these situations. Um, and to the extent that we care, it's uh, really not visible from anywhere but from the um, the woodland. Fred, do you have anything to add to that?
Just uh, that uh, the Conservation Commission in their order of conditions has uh, required that the uh, when the snow is plowed, uh, when we got there, the uh, plowed snow was all mounted on the uh, west bound and, which is immediately adjacent to wetlands, and the Conservation Commission has asked, uh, and there doesn't seem to be any objection to this, that the snow plowing take place in a way that mounds the snow on the northbound uh, where as it, as it, as it melts, it does not immediately affect the wetlands. And other than that, I, I think uh, you, it's pretty well covered at uh, it's just kind of a no-brainer in my opinion.
Thanks, Fred. Appreciate it. All right, any questions from the board about the project? Bruce Colton?
Um, only to say that uh, I essentially agree with Fred. I mean, this seems to be a, a very uh positive uh, uh, investment in this property and this, and this pro- building. It's uh, it's, it's, it's a robust piece of uh, installation, it's gonna last and, and, you know, for a while, it's durable. And uh, I can't see any uh, problems. I had no further questions of clarification or anything. It all seems to be quite clear and uh, and, and quite supportable.
Thanks, Bruce. Any other questions? Then I'd like to open it up for public comments. Um, so if you'd like to make a comment as part of tonight's hearing, please use the raise hand function on the Zoom platform. And again, I ask all speakers from the public to identify themselves with their full name and their address. So I'll wait just a couple of seconds to see if there are any public comments. Great, okay, seeing no comments. It, are we at a place where we can vote on this proposal board? Bruce?
Well, I think we are, but we'll see. Um, I would move acceptance or granting of the uh, uh, approval uh, for the uh, for the applicant, to the applicant for the uh, uh, for everything as documented and presented uh, with uh, without um unconditionally, I guess I should say. I'm not sure whether we have to have findings and so forth. It hadn't occurred to me that uh, but if we do, we, we, we find uh, that uh, this is consistent with all relevant uh portions of um, section. And I don't have a section, but you would insert that. So I guess that's my, that's my motion.
I ha- I understand what he was saying, but um, Nate, I thought we included findings and conditions. Is that correct?
We did. Uh, Ian, I'm gonna share my screen. Thanks for your presentation, and then we can um just walk through uh, straight, if this is visible, a Word document. So yeah, as Bruce mentioned, the finding is simple. The board finds that the project complies with the relevant criteria of section eleven point two four of the zoning bylaw, and is an amendment to the, to SPR two thousand one zero 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 two and SPR ninety eight zero zero sixteen. There are a few waivers here uh, just uh, because there, you know, it's a, it's a minor kind of adjustment. Uh, so the landscape plan, lighting plan, soil erosion plan, sign plan, traffic impact statement, and existing condition survey. So we don't necessarily require, I mean, we could require a full survey, but we can waive these. Uh, and then there's a few conditions. There, there are, there are, all, all of them are standard conditions that we normally have, shall be built substantially in accordance with the plans submitted and reviewed, be managed in accordance with the management plan. You know, any substantial changes would come back to the board uh, that expires within two years of uh, of its filing. All work would be done within twenty four months. The two other uh, conditions are, you know, there are um lights underneath the canopy, and so I just said that all exterior lights shall be downcast and not shine onto adjacent properties. I don't, I don't think they do. And then there's an existing tree near um near the parish hall, and so I, I have condition seven that the existing tree west of the building and along the driveway shall be protected during trench excavation, including handsawing of exposed roots. That could be something we discussed, but you know, it's really close to the, where the trench will be. I don't know how, you know, if it can be saved, but I just there was some discussion, or in the application said they would, you know, they would try to try to preserve that one tree. So that's, that's it.
Thank you, Nate. Bruce?
Um, yeah, I, I apologize. I, I had read these, but I had read them as being uh, um boy, uh, uh, standard, and so I hadn't registered that there was any special requirement. So I would, I amend my motion to uh, uh, to, to the, the, that we approved the uh, the the application, the project uh, with the, with the, with the waivers uh, as noted, with the finding as noted, and with the conditions as proposed or in the uh in the, in the draft uh, um, condition, with the conditions as proposed.
Great, and then are you uh, open to a friendly amendment, amendment to close the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. Very well, very, very good, very well.
We have a motion on the table. Thank you, Bruce. Is there a second? Jesse?
Yep, I will second that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And let's do a roll call vote. Bruce Colton?
I.
Fred Hartwell?
I.
Lawrence Clutz?
I.
Jesse Major?
I.
I, Johanna Newman, I'm an I, and Karen Winter?
I.
Great. Thank you very much for being here, Ian. Good luck with the project.
All right, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Everyone have a good night. Thank you.
You as well. All right, it is six fifty five P M, and we are gonna move into our general housing discussion. So um, we have two topics in particular that we're hoping to cover during this general housing discussion. The first is the li- list of potential conditions for buy right ADUs. And the second is continuing a discussion about a potential overlay for existing apartment complexes. Um, and we're gonna aim to spend roughly thirty minutes on each of those topics. Um, so I'll do my best to operate as a timekeeper to keep us on track. Um, and then after that, we'll take our eight o'clock break, and then, or we can assess and see uh, there's a lot more we need to get done. Um, all right, so Nate, are you the best person to get us started on the potential conditions for buy right ADUs?
Yeah, I, I'll share my screen in a minute. I think I can, we can, you know, walk through what, what I have, and I was, you know, I think I forwarded to the board. There is a, uh, an online workshop next Tuesday, the eleventh, uh, I think it's three o'clock, but you have, you have to register. It's not, there's no fee just to get your name and email, and it's an online workshop where the state will be discussing a model bylaw for the protected use ADUs. I'm not, you know, I, I plan to attend, I, you know, I'm sure there'll be a lot of people on there. And so, you know, I would say, no matter what we do tonight, I think we could continue this discussion until after that workshop. I have been reading other communities, so Belcher Town, South Hadley have advertised um, in the newspaper there, new ADU bylaw, uh, Easton Meadow. Uh, it has one, so I've looked at that and some others around the state, and so, you know, it's interesting. I think there's some different interpretation of the rules and regulations and what staff had had, and so the most recent ADU document that was sent out, I think maybe just this week, had some changes that were highlighted in yellow, which I can share, and so you know, it's, it's, it's interesting that I think the I think a bylaw, you know, could evolve depending on how communities approach this. And the state still hasn't, as far as I know, reviewed all town meeting votes in terms of, you know, reviewing them for consistency with the legislation and the rules and regulations, and so not that we don't wanna rush into anything. We do have a bylaw on the books, and some of the interpretation of how that will be applied is happening now with the building commissioner. And so, you know, one important piece is the rules and regulations say that a, a principal dwelling has at least one dwelling unit on, on a lot, and so you know, it sounds like, well, you have, you can allow an ADU, or you need to allow ADU on properties with more than one dwelling. And so all of a sudden, it could mean that, you know, apartments or townhouses or anything with more, with any, with just one unit could have an ADU, but the regulations don't say you need, need to do that. It just says that you have to have at least one unit on a property to allow an ADU. So a lot of communities are actually writing specifically that ADUs are only allowed with single-family homes, which is kind of the the thought that it was, and so the, you know, the regulations don't say otherwise, right? I, I feel like there's a bunch of interpretation, and so and one of my proposals is that it's, it really were, we would allow ADUs only on single-family homes, which is how we've had it written all along. But you know, there were some questions when the rules and regs first came out about that, and so I'm kind of going back to that. Uh, you know, it just seems strange that you could have a fifty unit apartment building and then allow an ADU. You know, I don't know, just, I, I don't, that was never my thought that that's how it was, would be applied. You know, some communities are really having some design standards with ADUs, and we have some as well. And you know, I think it's really interesting that, you know, the state was, it says you can't really have any unless you're in a local historic district, but we unless you're in a local historic district. But we, you know, most zoning by laws don't regulate single family homes. And so it's interesting to me that, you know, and they say you can't be more restrictive than what you are with a, you know, the, the principal dwelling or single family home. And so some communities are now saying that an accessory dwelling unit has to have the same setbacks as the principal dwelling. So they, it's not that they have the setbacks of an accessory structure, which is what, how we do it now, but they actually have to have the setbacks of the principal dwelling. Meaning they can't be, you know, ten feet from a side yard setback if the principal dwelling setback is twenty feet, right? So they have to follow all that, which may or may not work on some size properties. Um, you know, we, we say that, you know, only have one curb cut and to the extent feasible, you know, unless DPW allows it, you have to have the one. A few communities are saying that. Um, you know, we have to the extent feasible, uh, stairways and doors should be on the side or rear, which I, I'm not sure if we have it in there. But, you know, I, to me, qualifying it to the extent feasible allows that. And so that becomes a decision of the building commissioner and staff when reviewing an application. And so I don't think that's unreasonable. And that, you know, so the idea was that we would look at these draft conditions and then send something to the state they've offered to review, you know, towns' regulations. And, you know, my thought would be even if the state came back and said, we're not sure about these, you know, then it's still the board's decision and a local decision on Amherst's part. Do we still want to move forward with it, you know, and talk to our attorneys at KP Law? I mean, the state might say that half of what we have, they don't like. Or they don't think it's reasonable, but we might be able to justify it according to the regulations. And so then it becomes our decision. Do we move forward with it? And I, you know, I think there's, I, you know, at first I was like, let's try to get something on the books really quickly. But I do think we have something and the building commissioner has been using it. You know, we have, you know, half a dozen conditions that are consistent with the regulations. And so, uh, you know, we can follow those. I think there are some questions about how we determine gross floor area. It mentions the building code in terms of height and then it mentions all these other things. You know, basements, attics, mezzanines. And so typically the building code really defines habitable space. And so we wouldn't consider an unfinished basement as part of the gross layer area of the house, right? So if you had a twelve hundred square foot ranch and you had a twelve hundred square foot basement underneath it and an attic that is unfinished but allows storage and really, the building code would say you have a twelve hundred square foot house. But the way these regulations are kind of written, it almost sounds like you'd have the twelve hundred foot, square foot basement, the twelve hundred square foot first floor. And then say six hundred feet in the attic and you have a three thousand square foot home, which allows you to get up to a nine hundred square foot ADU. But if you were allowed to only get to, you know, nine hundred square feet or half the gross floor area, whatever is smaller, really you'd only be allowed a six hundred square foot ADU. And so, you know, the, a number of communities are defining it as habitable space. And that's kind of the approach we've taken. I know that some attorneys have called the town on behalf of property owners or prospective applicants and said, well, that's not how you need, that's not how it is interpreted. And so, you know, at some point there'll probably be a lawsuit, whether it's in Amherst or some community. Because there, you know, I think the rules and regulations, um, you know, if you take it for what it is, uh, you know, the way it defines, the way, the way I mentioned, building code is only on building code for height. You know, there's a, it says the height according to building code, comma, basements, comma, yada, yada, whatever else is there. And so, um, you know, you, it, so, you know, I don't know, you know, Rob Mora, the building commissioner is like, I don't know if it really is the habitable space. I think it's just this gross floor area, which is really interesting because depending on how you calculate it and how it's defined, open porches, breezeways counts, could count towards gross floor area. Um, and so, you know, what that means is anyone could get up to almost nine hundred square feet, right? You could have a really small footprint, as long as you have a basement and an attic and other things, you get to nine hundred. Maybe that's not bad, right? Maybe that's not a bad thing. We allow a thousand anyways in town. And, uh, you know, there's been some discussion before this of having, having it go up to eleven hundred square feet, uh, for an ADU. So, you know, I don't know if that's a problem. It's just, you know, again, an, an interpretation of the rules and regulations that the state came up with to try to help implement the legislation. And, um, you know, so I, I just think that, you know, a, a, a number of communities are taking different approaches on how you define and calculate the gross fo- floor area. And that's the starting point for an accessory dwelling unit. And so, you know, we're running into that, you know, there's been a few calls where there's a small house with a connected breezeway in a garage. And is this breezeway that has the same roof as the house and has walls, but it's not insulated, it's not really finished space? Is that part of your gross floor area? And, you know, if they say, if, in this example, if they say yes, they're allowed a bigger ADU. If we say no, it's a smaller ADU. And it could be the difference of a hundred square feet. You know, this is say a hypothetical, but, you know, that could mean a lot. You know, either you could have an eight hundred fifty square foot ADU or a seven hundred fifty or six fifty or five fifty. And, you know, that hundred feet could mean a lot, square feet could mean a lot. And so, you know, we, it, we haven't received an application yet. We've had a lot of questions. And I, you know, I think the building commissioner is, um, is applying the by law we have. So it, you know, it's single family homes, it's using habitable space for gross floor area and some of the conditions we have. And I think, you know, if the planning board is kind of leaning one way or the other after this discussion, uh, you know, it helps inform how we apply our current by law when we have inquiries. Because if we said no, you know, this is, we think we could allow ADUs on duplexes, triplexes apartments. And, you know, it's a different interpretation of the regulations. And if we think we do apply it only to single family homes. And, um, you know, uh, limiting the number of parking spaces is something we're doing. They say you can't require a minimum. I think the concern in Amherst is, you know, if we don't have a maximum, someone could put a lot of parking on a property. Uh, so, you know, I think those are things that are unique to Amherst. And, you know, I, I've set, we've sent around the documents. I could share them in a minute, but I don't know if there's any, you know, general ideas or comments or, you know, we can't really require owner occupancy. That's not something, you know, the student home definition, you know, doesn't require occupants, owner occupancy. It requires that one unit not be something. And, you know, if we only require ADUs for single family homes, then that means the single family home, you know, one or the other. And so when you read through the regulations, uh, you know, very technically and explicitly, it seems like the student home definition, you know, could work. And so, you know, again, it's something that where we send it to the state and they might say, geez, this is unreasonable. And then, you know, the housing subcommittee and others have worked on why it's reasonable and justifiable. And so, so are we comfortable moving that forward if the state has a different opinion? And I, you know, I don't, I'm, you know, one, I'm not, you know, I'm not really, I'm kind of agnostic in terms of how, how it goes, you know. And the state, for instance, says you can't really require certain utility connections. And one town is already proposing that if it's a detached ADU, it can't be run, the utilities can't be run through the existing house. It has to have separate meters. And the state regulations say that's, that's unreasonable, but this town, you know, is going to ju- it thinks they can justify it. So I think there's going to see, we're going to see a lot of different approaches. And, um, my opinion might now be to, you know, wait a few weeks and I'm trying to gather more example bylaws from towns just so we can kind of get an understanding of how they're interpreting these, these rules and regulations. I mean, there were, the rules and regs were put out, um, you know, maybe a month ago. And so it's been, you know, a fast turnaround for communities.
Yep. All right. Thanks for that data dump, Nate. Jesse, I see your hand.
Thank you. I guess I kind of have a procedural question for, for talking about details. And I think you've answered part of it, Nate, but I was wondering what the, what the next step is. So we've talked about a lot of things, meaning you staff could send it to the state, say, what do you think? It could go to council just for voting to adopt by law. It could go back to committee and we could talk more like what, what do we think the actual next step is? And what are we trying to accomplish sort of in the short term?
Yeah, I'll share my screen in a minute. I think we'd actually walk through it and that becomes kind of a template, um, you know, for a zoning amendment. And so the, I was at the CRC meeting last week. They're curious about this. I'll probably go to their next meeting. And so, you know, I think, um, right now it's a, an idea for a zoning amendment. So it's not even an official zoning amendment. So the next step would be to get to a point where the planning board would vote to recommend this as a zoning amendment to town council. You know, go to council and then they would refer it back to the CRC and planning board. And so, you know, kind of like what happened with U Drive, we discussed it for many months and then we actually voted it to go to council. So the next step would be to take what's we have and vote it to council as a zoning amendment.
But so, so instead of sending it to the state for opinion?
No.
That could happen in parallel, you mean?
It happened in parallel.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. That was helpful.
Or we could send it to the state first. I mean, I, I think, I'm, I'm, my guess is the state might be really busy. And so even if we send it to the state in a week, it might take them weeks to get back to us. And maybe we want to wait. The council might say, oh, have you done this? Would we wait to hear back from them? And so?
And, and again, just from my, all of our understanding, to send to the state, is that something staff just decides we're going to do that? Or like we as a planning board should vote and say, yes, we want to get opinion. Like, how does that work?
Uh, no, I think the planning board would vote to do that. And so, yeah, and it's something the state doesn't usually offer. So usually we don't, you know, as a, um, you know, we wouldn't usually preview our, a zoning amendment with the state, but they've offered it, I think, just knowing there's a lot of questions with the new ADU regu- regulation. So.
Thanks Nate. Bruce?
Um, Nate, I was going to chime, well, uh, um, Joh- Johanna, I was going to chime in on the, uh, the question of, uh, should the, uh, ADUs, uh, should our by law regulate the ADUs to have the same setback as the principal dwelling? Um, but it occurs to me, Nate, if you wanted to roll through the draft, there may be the point in the, uh, i- i- in, in the actual draft where that crops up. But if it's not mentioned in the draft, if it's something, uh, that you were just saying is a, an issue that's out there with communities, then I would, then I would give my opinion now.
Sure. No, it is. So.
This is, it seems like a good segue for you to pull up the.
Yeah. So I will say a few communities are now taking that approach where they are inserting this that A- 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 ADUs need to meet the setbacks of the principal dwelling and not setbacks of accessory structures. So typically right now in our, we don't, we don't apply, we apply the setbacks for accessory structures to accessory dwelling units. Right? And so if it's a twenty foot front setback, accessory structure doesn't need to have twenty feet. Um, you know, if it's so, you know, or the rear side is a little different. And so, you know, what I have here in yellow are new additions to, you know, set, I, I, we had sent this previously in the packet and then I updated it, look, looking at other bylaws. And so one would be the definition is a principal, single family dwelling, a principal, single family dwelling. And so, you know, we're really putting it in the definition of ADU that it's accessory to a single family. And then these proposed requirements are our kind of standards and conditions we'd have in the by law. You know, shall be located on the same lot as a principal, single family dwelling. Accessory dwelling unit shall only be allowed on lots with a single family dwelling. Um, accessory dwelling unit shall not be allowed on lots with a duplex or other residential uses. You know, some of it's redundant, but just to get the point across. And then, you know, it goes on to say, you know, there's more, but those are kind of the changes from what we had seen previously when we were looking at this document.
Thanks Nate. Bruce?
Um, on this matter, uh, Nate, uh, and colleagues, I, I actually think this makes sense that, uh, an ADU should be limited to a single family dwelling. Uh, because if they're, uh, and ironically, perhaps I was discussing this on with Nate, uh, hypo- uh, uh, on a, a project for the Amherst Community Land Trust, uh, yesterday or the day before. And, uh, we were contemplating proposing an ADU in association with a, with a triplex. And Nate said, you might want to think about that. Or, or we, we, we have yet to discuss this. And so I, I think it makes sense here that, that we shouldn't be allowed to do what Nate and I were discussing, uh, earlier in the week. Because it seems that it is an acc- it is an accessory dwelling unit and, and, and it should be obvious to what, uh, to what it is an accessory. Because if you've got three units and you've got an ADU, it might matter which of those, uh, three units it was accessory to and it wouldn't be obvious. And so it, it doesn't seem unreasonable to, uh, li- m- make this limitation that's just proposed in the, uh, in the highlighted text here. But I'd be interested to know whether others agree. It feels more logical and, uh, more manageable to do it this way.
Thank you, Bruce. Jesse?
Yeah, um, keep me short. I totally agree. I think it's the logical interpretation rather than lots that already have multifamily or units makes sense. So, yeah, I support that.
Thank you.
All right, I'll just, I'll scroll down if that's all right. Um, so, you know, what we're proposing is with the protected use ADU, you know, it's a, it's a forty-eight, section three. You know, there's a number of things that essentially the town can't deny. And, you know, we're taking the approach that we'd have, allow one ADU. It's permitted on a lot with a single family dwelling. And it would just receive a building permit from the building commissioner. You know, the other option would be it would go to site planner view to the planning board. And I don't know if that's actually worth the time and effort and public hearing. And so the idea would be to try to have enough conditions, requirements, whatever we want to call them here, to provide guidance to the staff and building commissioner when making those decisions. And, you know, the state and the regulations, you know, really, they really want it to be simple. And so, uh, you know, what we're trying to do is provide enough here that is, you know, consistent with the regulations and can allow, allow an A- ADUs to happen. So number four is the student home definition. Uh, it's been modified to say, you know, uh, with a single family dwelling. Uh, and then, you know, two or more persons, the, the red text is what the housing subcommittee has discussed. And so, you know, we still think that this is, you know, the plenty of work and discuss it. But, you know, number four, you know, can be justified and is reasonable for Amherst. And so, you know, we would include it as part of, uh, the standards and conditions for ADUs.
Thanks Nate. Let's pause there for one quick minute because I see Fred's hand. Fred, go ahead.
Yeah, Nate, uh, I, uh, I'm trying to remember whether we covered this in the housing subcommittee or not. But, uh, just, uh, I'm, 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 I'm fine with what you had here. But I think that the, uh, just in general, I think a definition like this, uh, belongs in, uh, chapter twelve of the, the by law rather than here where it's limited to, uh, the, uh, you know, the accessory dwelling unit.
In Fred referring specifically to the student home language?
Yeah, the student home definition.
Great. Nate, we'll take that under advisement. Nate, Jesse?
Uh, I probably agree with you Fred, but I think this might be a good entry to have it here. And then maybe at a later date, we can have it added to the by law as a standard definition if this moves forward.
Bruce?
Words out of my mouth, but I was going to say exactly the same thing.
Great. Lawrence?
Yeah, so a, a question. I, how, how is, how is, how would something like this be, enforced? Um, I mean, who's, who is going to, who is going to hold these residents to account? Are, are, you know, potential residents going to be required to prove that they're not, you know, attending colleges or universities? I, I just, I, I, I'm still hung up on, on, on this. And, and again, as I, as I said in a recent meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the idea. I see the issue. I know what, what the board's trying to address here. But I, I just, I, I'm, I'm still just hung up on u- using this a- a- approach. Um, so I, 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 I don't mean to belabor the point, but I think it's, it's, um, uh, just something that I, I, I want to raise here that, um, it just, it, I, I, I still feel that it, it doesn't necessarily seem like, um, the best way forward to essentially create a class of people who have separate housing restrictions on them. Again, I, I say that I'm very sympathetic to, to what the board's trying to do here. But I, I, I just, I could see a lot of possible unintended consequences here.
Thanks, Lawrence. Let's move to Bruce and then Jesse and then Fred. So Bruce, go ahead.
Um, I'll give two ounces, Lawrence, uh, to how it could be enforced. Um, the first is, and the more demanding and, uh, of, of, of staff time, uh, would be to, uh, learn how it is enforced, uh, in State College, Pennsylvania and possibly other towns to do this and learn from them. Um, the second, which I think is, uh, the more probable and the more, uh, appropriate initially for us, is that we, it, it is enforced. Is that we, it, it is enforced through, um, it's a complaint-driven enforcement mechanism. Um, because it's, uh, it's, 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 it's not that we are. Um, troubled so much by this, uh, perhaps as we would be by. Uh, non-navigally behavior. Um, and, uh, initially, we would, uh, I think, uh, enforce it. Um, if, uh, occupants or neighbors or so forth had reason to believe that this part of the law was being violated. Um, I think that's probably the, the way in which we would begin to enforce this.
Thanks, Bruce. Jesse?
Thanks, um, thanks, Lawrence. Uh, so I've been to three or three other town meetings last two weeks. And this is exactly the issue that comes in. I went to talk about this exact possibility. And this is what everybody's worried about, right? And I get it, makes sense. Uh, your expression that you're worried about. Creating this to class essentially that's treated differently. Lot of different responses. I think I want to say what Bruce said, but in a different way. Which is similarly to how we enforce four unrelated in a rental house. Or three, we, we don't really. It's sort of voluntary. We gather that information somewhat on the rental registration, but, oh, but. Nate, please add into this. I don't think the town really has the means to enforce it unless it's pointed out in some way that there's a problem. Right? Whether it's, and, and I don't see any of this as a behavioral measure. Um, I don't think that's the goal. Uh, but it's, it's only when, it, it gives the town some ability to step in and. Potentially try and enforce or change the situation if necessary. And importantly, I think it gives. The message that this is what we want to accomplish. To landlords, to developers. It's giving the message that we only want one of these two units to be a student home. With this whole goal of preserving long-term resident possibilities. So, how are we gonna enforce this at this moment? And Nate, please add, I, I don't think we can or will enforce it. But I still think it's valuable to have that as our goal in the bylaw.
Thanks, Jesse. Fred?
Well, there's a couple of things here. One is that, uh. The, uh, the same issues arise with the four unrelated, and. That's been around in the bylaw for decades and decades and decades. Um, the other thing I want to point out here is there's, there's an elephant in the room, and the elephant in the room. Is the state legislature. That has plenary authority to do whatever the hell it wants, and they've done it. And I didn't really want to go down this road, but we've got to do something. Uh, the alternative is to do nothing. And I think, uh, in terms of what the, uh, the people of this town expect from. Uh, people like us is to do something. And I think that, uh, yeah, we, this is an opportunity to do something. And I would also add that, uh, remember that we have rental registration in this town. Uh, a very aggressive rental registration, and that can clearly. Uh, be, uh, a source of information that would allow enforcement of this. Uh, so, uh, uh, I'm, my, at this point, my conscience is clear and moving ahead with this.
Um, just before I go to you, I want to just note that the time is seven twenty-six, so we're one minute over our thirty-minute allotment. So. Um, why don't you make your comment, and then let's figure out what we want to do in terms of. Next steps or potential action items on this conversation. Go ahead.
Thanks. Ju- just to add to what Fred said, I think Fred, what you're referring to is the state has removed our ability to have owner occupancy requirement. Which the town has long had for ADUs. And this is really a response to that, Lawrence, to put that in perspective, right? So we can't say. It has to be owner occupied for, uh, ADU by right. And so this feels like a way where we can not accomplish the same thing, but, uh, uh. Retain the level of control on not having it be only student homes.
Yeah, and I, I, I totally under, sorry, Johanna, to jump in when, when we were bringing this conversation to a close, but. I, 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 I totally get that and am totally supportive of that. I, I, I understand how we got to this point. Um, and I know a ton of work has gone into it as well. I know other towns have, have done this around the country. I just, I, I, I have to name personally, I, I, I wish we could explore a way to do this. That doesn't involve. You know, uh, applying separate rules to a class of people just by virtue of, of. How they're choosing to spend their time or pursue education. Um, and, and I, I just, I, I have to name that. Um, but, uh, but again, I, I totally, I totally understand the goal. Totally understand why the board's taking this on and that we're in a difficult position. Um, but, but I, I feel a little queasy about this one.
And to be clear, the board hasn't done this yet. There are members of the board who are drafting things. We have not taken any kind of official action, so.
Sure, right.
Yeah, I was gonna jump in, Johanna, and then, you know, you know, you know, the half hour is, you know. Was a time, you know, kind of a, some parameters if you want to extend it. I think there's a few more conditions that are new. Yeah, I was gonna say, Lawrence, I think, and, you know, I don't know. So, it'd be difficult to kind of go out and ask for this information, but if it's written clearly enough, it can be enforceable. And so, you know, the idea would be. If someone were in a unit, the town wouldn't really seek to evict them necessarily, but we'd work with the property owner to find different housing or different solutions. That comply with the bylaw. And so, you know, there's, um. You know, and I think when this would go through review, you know, it allows the building commissioner to ask questions. You know, if it wasn't, and then, you know, say if it wasn't in place. And so. Um, yeah, but, you know, it can be a part of that. I, I, you know, I do think that it can get tricky in terms of enforcement. Um, but, you know, I think there's, like Bruce said, I think even, uh. You know, uh, like Ithaca has two unrelated, it's not the same, but they, you know, there's other college communities that have different. Standards in terms of how they regulate occupancy, some is with the student home and some is with. You know, no more than two unrelated can live in a unit, which is really small, but then they have generous areas in town where they allow. You know, student housing and development. And so some of it is, you know. If the, you know, we're trying to look at the University Drive overlay, we might be talking about other places in town. So it's kind of, you know, what are the, what are the suite of things we're doing? That can help with different kinds of housing. And so to me, this would be one that might be able to help. Um, protect neighborhoods and preserve some neighborhoods while we're doing some other zoning measures or. Or incentives or things that help with other kinds of housing. It could be directly for students. And so. I think, you know, it'd be kind of within the context of all of that.
Yep. I'd like, um. My proposal would be that we allocate some more time on our agenda to this tonight, but that we have Nate go through. Kind of the whole document, and we take notes on questions that we have as he goes through it, and then have one discussion just to be more efficient. Does that sound okay to folks? Okay, great. Nate, go ahead.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, and I think this was shared as a word document, so, you know, you can always email me individually with track changes or comments, and then, you know, staff can synthesize, so. Um, number five, there shall be no additional driveway, uh, or separate driveway curb cuts unless allowed by Public Works. A parking plan needs to be approved and submitted by the building commissioner. Uh, that's number six. Number seven, the ADU shall be operated in accordance with a management plan submitted to the building commissioner. And upon change of ownership, a new management plan shall be provided to town. And so again, you know, these are things that, you know, the building commissioner staff would ask for. And the, they're important because if there's a problem, we refer back to these documents. We say, hey, look, you know, you're not putting the trash away, or. You know, the trash is supposed to be inside an enclosure and it's not. And so that's why, you know, things like this, the parking plan and management plan. We've been using it, uh, pretty effectively in our, our conditions with the zoning board or with other things. Um, you have to be, you know, rent the property in accordance with the rental property bylaw. Again, that helps with, you know, management. Um, any exterior lighting needs to be downcast. We have this one onsite storage and management of waste and recycling shall occur on the interior of the dwelling within an attached garage or other accessory outbuilding. Or screened appropriately from public view. There shall be no freestanding dumpster or storage unit associated with a property regulated under this section. Except on a temporary basis in association with construction or similar temporary purposes. You know, we don't want necessarily, you know, all of a sudden you have an ADU and they say, well, let's just put a dumpster in our driveway. Uh, you can do that, but it has to be screened. Uh, there shall be no more than two parking spaces provided for an accessory dwelling unit. I mean, it could, this could say three, it could say some number. Uh, more than two. The accessory dwelling unit shall be designed so that the appearance and scale of the building is compatible with the single family dwelling. Units in the vicinity, you know, we could say this is reasonable. The state might say it's unreasonable given the regulations. There's three criteria. You have to say that it's reasonable, you know, it, it meets a, a public purpose, it's, you know. It isn't an undue burden, and it has objective, clear kind of action taken from it. And so. You know, they might say, what is the appearance and scale? What does compatibility mean? I think if we need to, we could qualify those terms, but I think it's something we would want to have. Uh, to the extent feasible, newly constructed detached accessory dwelling units. Shall be located behind the front building line of the primary structure. And so we have that there, we have that now. And then this is one with the dimensional standards, a new detached accessory dwelling unit. That is not contained within or attached to an access, an existing accessory structure. Shall meet the setbacks and dimensional standards for the principal, single family dwelling. And so, for instance, if you had a garage that is closer to the setback, which we allow as an accessory structure. If we didn't qualify this, right, we just said an accessory dwelling unit has to meet the dimensional standards of the principal dwelling. You couldn't put an ADU in the garage. And so, you know, the way this is written is allowing for that to happen if there's an existing accessory structure, but if it's completely detached. Um, then it has to have, you know, those setbacks. And, you know. The building commissioner and I have talked about this, it ma- it makes sense on some properties and others it might not, right? So there might be a small property where. It might actually be better site design to have the accessory structure. Meet the accessory structure setbacks we have in our bylaw and not the setbacks of the principal dwelling. And so, you know. As a building permit, you know, there's no provision to waive this necessarily unless we say, you know, something like to the extent feasible or some. Again, some phrase that allows the building commissioner to be flexible on this. And so. The way it's written now, if a small lot came in and the owner said, oh, I'd like to put my accessory dwelling unit here, they look at it and say it doesn't meet the setbacks. You have to put it here. Maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, maybe it doesn't look as good. Um, so anyways, those are some considerations. You know, staff had provided comments on this. And, uh, the red text is what the housing subcommittee. Um, had provided in response, and it's been shared previously. I'm not gonna go through it, but it's, you know, things to read. And like I said. You know, feel free to email staff with questions or comments based on this.
Great, thank you. That's really helpful. Um, so it sounds like there's this online workshop on Tuesday, March eleventh. Folks should review this, submit comments and feedback to Nate. Sir, more discussion that folks want to pursue tonight?
Hilda has her hand raised. I think it's been raised a bit.
Thank you. Um. Well, maybe now would be a good time to open it up for public comment. Um, so. Why don't we go ahead and do that? Um, Pam, should I navigate this, or do you want to navigate this in terms of giving Hilda?
I, I can go ahead and do that. And do you want to say three minutes?
Three minutes, sounds great. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I'm here with Greenbaum two ninety-eight Montague Road. And I've managed property that I've owned for more than fifty years, probably closer to sixty. And I'm really bothered by provision number four. You put me in a situation of marriage. I'm not allowed by law to ask people what their marriage. Marital status is. That's one comment I wanted to make. The other one is, there are very few houses really that have this undergraduate principally. Well, I won't say principally what sucks, but anyway, that, that, that have party issues. But for the most part. If the, if the tenants are selected, well, there aren't problems. And if there aren't problems, I don't think there's something there that needs to be fixed. Undergraduates come of all ages, all sizes, all shapes. I'm thinking in terms of a single mother with a boyfriend and a couple of kids. Are enrolled in undergraduate studies. Does that mean? If the mother and the fa- and the, and the boyfriend aren't married, they can't rent one of these units? Um. There are all, all the veterans that come back and, and go to school, and there may be. Um, more than two that live in the building. I know the, with the size of nine hundred square feet, it's not very big, and it can't fit a lot of people into it. But I have a, I have a problem with the definition of student, I guess, because. There were so many that, that are renting houses that. Um, may or may not be married, and I can't ask that. But they may or may not be party people either. A lot of, lot of students pick. Houses to live in because they want to be in a quiet place where nobody's gonna bother them. And there may be more than two. For various reasons. So I just wanted to point out that, that I'm bothered by that. And I think you gotta work on the definition of student because. It can cause us legal issues. That I don't want to get into. I've been there once, fifty years ago, and I don't want to get involved with MCAD again. I learned my lesson. So that's what I wanted to point out.
Thank you for your comment, Hilda. Any other comments from the public? Okay, then, um, Jesse, and then Bruce.
Thanks, um. I feel often compelled to, to reframe this as, this is no attempt at behavior control. The motivation that the subcommittee had to try and do this has zero to do with behavioral problems. It's all about preserving neighborhoods and long-term year-round residents. That is the main effort and the main purpose. If there's another way to do it, we're all ears. We've talked about lots of different things. This is one way that we think could move us towards that goal. That's all.
Thanks, Jesse. Bruce?
There it is. Um, apropos of the setbacks that I mentioned that I was interested in earlier. I, I, I actually think it's probably okay to have it, uh. Um, uh, restricted by the basic setback lines. But I thought it said that it has to be the same. Setback as the principal dwelling. And I thought that what that meant was. If the dwelling unit is not actually on the setback, but, you know, it's inside, it's, 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 it's back. Away from the setback, but say the set, side yard setback is ten feet, and the dwelling is twenty feet from the property land. I interpreted what you said in your introduction, Nate, to mean that the ADU would have to be set back twenty feet, the same as the house. But I think now I understand that it has to respect the, the, uh, table three setbacks. Uh, and that I'm fine with. So I just wanted to, uh, make sure that I understood correctly. And that, uh, we make sure that when we, when we say what we say in the, uh. In, in the draft, that we don't convey the impression that I got mistakenly that we were talking about the. Actual house, not the requirement that pertains to the house.
Yep, and I see Nate nodding, so it sounds like it is the requirement, not the actual existing structure. Karen?
Yeah, it occurs to me that if our object is to provide housing for year-round residents. Maybe we could somehow formulate this as a duration short, no short term leases. Uh, or have a waiver. I mean, I, I understand what Hilda is saying. That, uh, there, you know, there are lots of year-round, uh, residents that are students, and we don't want to exclude them. Say there's a, um, mom with two kids that wants to rent it, and she's just a part-time student, or, or, yeah, I guess we said full-time student. Um, and she's gonna be there for four years or five years. Uh, she's. Um, and she's gonna be there for four years or five years, um, she's, she. Is the kind of person we don't wanna exclude, so I think we could work maybe on on. Somehow refining that so that we still. Uh, reach our object, which is that we don't want to have. Developers look at this as another, another way of cramming in even more. Short-term expensive milk the students renters when we have such a need. For people that that want to be residents of the town and that are here for longer.
Thanks, Karen. Um, Jesse.
Uh, I would just offer. What I've seen myself and heard lots of students is leases are twelve year, they're they're twelve month leases. Students just aren't here using the houses, so landlords take advantage of that in that same way. So I'm not, I'm not sure, I I like your idea Karen, but I'm not sure that works with this scenario.
And then I will share, I think I've said this in previous meetings, but for me personally as a board member, I struggle with the student home provision of this. Um, kinda draft bylaw and condition as well, it, um. So, you know, I'm interested in hearing what comes out of the webinar. Um, I think a lot of the other provisions make a lot of sense, I think the parking limits, I think the driveway cuts, I think the. You know, dimensional standards, the setbacks and getting all that. Um, and I think, I actually think the single-family home, uh, clarification also makes a lot of sense, but it's it's that student. Home piece that gives me pause. Okay, any other comments on this? Nate, do you wanna, so, just in terms of next steps and moving this along in the process. So that if we wanna get to the point of proposing a zoning amendment and actually having the board vote on that. Seems like, let's see what comes out of the webinar. Folks should respond to the dra- to you with comments on the draft. And I imagine we'll have at least one more conversation before we get it to the point of actually voting on any kind of language.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, Jesse.
Thanks, I'd like to just make one more comment, um. Myself and others have put a fair amount of time thinking about this and preparing the the documents we've shared. So I really just hope all of us will read that and try and internalize some of the information, I'm totally fine. The difference of a differences of opinion, I think that's fantastic, but. I'd hope at the next conversation, we can talk about some of those ideas that really that are motivating us to try and do this. As as part of the conversation, so that's it, thanks.
Great, thank you, Jesse. All right, um, the time is seven forty-five P M. My recommendation would be that we take our five-minute break now and then come back. And continue the general housing discussion with the focus on the potential overlay for apartment complexes. Does that sound good to folks? All right, so please make sure your audio is off, turn off your video and be back at seven fifty-one P M, thank you. Welcome back, everyone, seven fifty-one, let's see, Jesse's here, Lawrence is here. We're still waiting for Karen and Fred, I don't think I see Bruce either. All right, we have quorum, so I think we should go ahead and continue our discussion and others can join as we go. So the next thing that we were gonna talk about is our, the potential overlay for existing apartment complexes, so. Nate, do you wanna just frame this conversation and kinda get us to the point where we have a complete presentation, board members, you know. Note your questions and then we'll have, we'll have a round of discussion.
Sure, I'll start with, uh, sharing my screen. The, you know, we've discussed having, where there's multi-unit housing, having an overlay to allow. You know, densification of these areas. And I would say by safe point review or some, you know, at least not by special permit and having some flexible dimensional standards. Uh, and other things to allow, you know, to kinda encourage redevelopment. Some of the, you know, we do allow, uh, in our by law through special permit. For this to happen, I think the idea though is that a special permit is risky, it's discretionary. And most developers probably wouldn't undertake something, you know. Of this scale and complexity without knowing that, you know, they could have a permit issued and so we've talked about centering on North Amherst first. And so if the map's visible, you know, it's an area south of Meadow Street, running down North Pleasant. To Presidential Village here and then to one sixteen, it's an area. Um, you know, there's some single-family home properties that are rented, there's one or two old homes, um, up along Meadow Street and North Pleasant Street. So the idea would be, you might need some of these properties to allow for, again, that's this flexible design. You know, entryways in or new, new exits, um, into the overlay. You know, the Housing Production Plan and the Comprehensive Housing Market Study noted that. You know, to incentivize this, you might need to have three or four or five times the density of the existing multi-unit development and so. Uh, you know, we've never, you know, we've discussed this, it's an interest, interesting approach. Uh, and I, you know, I do think it would be, you know, it's it's a big undertaking and so what I've looked at is this whole area. And so just as an example, we could say that there's six hundred and fifty units in this area. You know, it's not by property, but as in in aggregate, there's six hundred and fifty units and so to triple that. You need, you know, nineteen hundred and fifty units, one thousand nine hundred and fifty. And, you know, what what this map is showing. Is North Square at the Mill District, if it wasn't a mixed-use. Project might have a hundred and fifty units on eight acres, that also includes parking and that's what these rectangles represent. An eight-acre rectangle with a hundred and fifty units. And so you need thirteen of those in the overlay to triple the density, so you know, think of thirteen, you know. It's just a visualization, it's kind of a, a, you know, something to look at, like, okay, if you think of the two buildings at the Mill District, the spatial relationships, the parking. You know, it it fits within this rectangle plus extra space, um, for open space and and site circulation, so. You know, it works, right, it's just, you know, that's kind of the density and scale. We might need to allow to incentivize redevelopment of these properties. Because, you know, you do have to take things offline, uh, phase in mid possible tenant relocation or phase it with rental. Uh, renewals and and so forth and financing. And so, you know, the housing subcommittee has looked at this and I think some of it would be what, you know, what are the characteristics we'd want in this overlay? And, you know, do we like the idea of the density here? You know, is it parcel by parcel, is it, you know, in this entire overlay? And again, it's volun- you know, this would be a voluntary overlay. It wouldn't require anything, a developer, a property owner, applicant would have to opt in. And I'll just share one more, uh, document, it's something that was sent out as well. But in the, uh. You have too many documents open here, hold on, here we are. So in the North Amherst, so we focus on North Amherst right now, you know, it doesn't go north of Meadow Street. Uh, there's conservation land, agricultural land there, doesn't go east of North Pleasant, I think that. You know, there's potential maybe, but to keep it kind of in one quadrant, you know, so the area I showed was a hundred and forty acres. It only had twenty-five properties, some of the apartment complexes had have been kinda minimized, so there's more owners. Um, some of the bigger apartment units are, you know, eighty-five at Presidential, eighty-five units. A hundred and seventy in North Village, one oh-six in Puffton and ninety-six at Townhouse. Most of the buildings are one and a half to two stories, there are some three stories in there. Um, occupancy status, when I went through the town's property cards and information, I mean. Um, most are non-owner occupied, so most of those are rentals, I, you know. If there's, you know, twenty-five properties and say there's however many owners, and they're there, I could find very few owner occupied units. Um, out of all the six hundred and fifty units. There are considerable wetlands within that area, uh, and so, you know, that's something to consider, you know, how do we balance development and wetlands? You know, so again, here's, you know, here's North Square, so you know, thirteen of these to triple the density in that area. You know, North Square is four stories, uh, three and four stories, you know, two, two really big buildings try to break up the facade with different. You know, treatment and maybe architectural design cues. And then overlay considerations, you know, how tall do we want? You know, there was a discussion that at seven stories is where building code and kind of, um. Efficiencies of scale and building material and cost become, uh, kind of, you know, synergistic, I don't know if we really want seven stories. You know, what do we want for architectural style and design guidelines, you know? Flexibility of the overlay, you know, kind of with predictability, uh, you know, do we have affordability requirements? And what is the visibility from, you know, North Pleasant, Meadow Street, one sixteen and the neighborhoods? You know, do we have different kind of setbacks? And, you know, how how would this actually happen and so, I think one of the discussion with the housing subcommittee was if we like this idea, we think the density could work. You know, we'd probably then discuss with property owners and maybe even with some developers. And say, you know, what do, what do you think, you know, it might not be the developers we normally see. That come and, uh, I mean, there might be some that permit in town, there's been some others that have reached out over the years. To Amherst in terms of housing and so we might, you know, we, you know, there's a few different ideas we have in terms of. Discussing the feasibility of this and so, you know, right now it's an idea, we think it's a nice one. You know, and the idea is really it's to allow in incentivize some development where there could be some pressures taken off other areas of town. And, oh, you know, there could be other types of zoning that we allow. Say if we think this is a a a nice idea, the university drive overlay, if that is approved and it and it works. And there's a few other areas in town where we could have multi-unit density. Then, you know, maybe we could start talking about what's kind of middle density, what's smaller scale development in other neighborhoods. And maybe we wouldn't be as concerned about, you know, if it's all student occup- you know, occupied and, you know. And the thing there is with the students is really, they change the housing market in terms of price point and demand. And ability right now, so Amherst is very expensive with a very low vacancy rate and a very low turnover. And so the market is is very difficult to get into, whether it's for rental or ownership. And so, you know, when I actually came back to graduate school now, it's been a number of years, but when I came back to look at housing for a weekend, it was so expensive. I remember going back to Boston and I'm thinking, I'm pa- I'd pay more than I ha- I am in Brighton and I might as well just go look at other schools because. You know, it'd been better to just maybe to go to U R I, um, U R I or or somewhere else, right, some other city. Because it was so hard to find housing in Amherst and, you know, I think that trend's continued and it's actually probably gotten worse and so. It's it's, you know, I think some of this is what are some predev ideas we have? And, you know, whether or not this moves forward, it was discussed in two thousand thirteen with the zoning subcommittee, the planning board, it never became a zoning amendment. It was a discussion based on some of the consultants we had for some of the plans at the time. And so, you know, really we're re-investigating it as, you know, we have these multi-unit areas in town, they were permitted in the sixties and seventies. And then the town, uh, reflexively, you know, afterwards said, wow, let's change the zoning, so now most of these are now non-conforming. And so through a special permit, they could add density, but it's really risky and so the question is, couldn't we actually? Could we allow them to densify in a way that it doesn't, is not as impactful? Uh, to the neighborhoods, right, I mean, in North Amherst, we already have a lot of density. Is, if these could be developed nicely, you know, there's bus routes, you know, there's a, we're planning a multi-use path along North Pleasant Street. That connects to the nor- uh, university north, um, we could have another bike path and so, you know, what are ways that we can make this work? Um, and not, you know, not really disrupt kind of what's already happening in that area, so again. Have questions and comments or discussion?
Thank you, Nate, thanks for the presentation and for kind of summarizing it that way. I could imagine that it might be possible during the discussion that we'll want your presentation back up, but. Yeah, why don't we move on to board discussion and then we'll go to public comment, so Lawrence, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, so, so this is, this seems like a really appealing, um. I idea to me and and one that's not gonna, you know, significantly disrupt. Uh, the the character of of what's already in that area. What, one question that I asked, or wanted to ask, there's, um, I know that there's some, I think, protected farmland. And that the university has some farmland on the far side of Pleasant Street along where some of these developments. Or part of, uh, part of this overlay is going to go in. Is is none of that area is being drawn into this, right?
No, the farmland's on the other side of. No, the farmland's on the other side of North Pleasant Street, so. The overlay really was, you know, over existing multi-unit um properties and then some single-family home or, you know, multi-unit rentals. But there's no protected farmland or any other, you know, type of use in that overlay. You know, other than say wetland, I don't wanna say, you know, there's wetlands as part of the property, but not agricultural land.
Yeah, I I I was almost certain that was the case, but I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Bruce?
Um, I think Nate's drawn a a a very um. A well-drafted boundary, I think, and and it's, and I suppose in some respects, not to be disrespectful, disrespectful Nate, but. It's, it's pretty obviously bounded to the north by the fact that across Meadow Street, you've got the APR land of the Schwartz Farm. And to the west, you've got Route one sixteen. And and to the south, you've got after City Drive uh overlay a bit, but and for good reason. But uh here, thankfully, perhaps this is a place where I think that. It it helps, uh it kind of defines itself in a way. So I think that's a good thing about this site. And uh the number of people, the 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 dense, this, the number of. Uh units that are here, which is, we can make a difference uh if if we uh 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 seek to allow the tripling of the density. Which I think we can and should do. Um, the fact that most of these apparently are rental seems to me to be. Um, means that we're dealing with a consolidated group of owners, which is again, you know. Uh good, so that's, it's all, you know, as we perhaps noted before, the dominoes seem to be falling in the right direction. Um, one specific thing that I I think I will speak to. Um, the question as to whether this should include inclusionary zoning. And I think maybe that's just being asked, perhaps because this is a predominantly student area and maybe we would be thinking, well. Is this a good place to put uh affordable housing mixed in with might be a, might be a predominantly student uh constant. A student rental concentration, which frankly is something I think we should aim to achieve here. However, I, Janet McGowan made this point uh to uh. But I think it was important enough that we really should. Repeat it. Um, the idea is that this could be such a large development. That if we don't have inclusionary zoning in here, we risk shifting the balance of the town's uh. Fraction of uh affordable housing on the S H I. Uh dangerously close, if not below uh ten percent, depending on how all of this sugared out, of course, this is not gonna happen immediately, but. Uh we should be mindful of uh exempting uh large uh areas of housing. Uh from the affordable, uh from the. From the inclusionary zoning requirement, because we could uh find ourselves in in trouble if we do that. Um, but speaking as to the concern that may be driving that thought, uh which is, do we want to put uh? Um, affordable housing uh distributed amongst a a sea of substantially short-term rentals. Um, I think that we don't have to do inclusionary. Affordable housing distributed in the way we normally do. And indeed, the article seven fifteen, I think, says, which is it. It it basically asks that the housing, the affordable units. Or houses be distributed appropriately within the the full context. In this case, I think we might decide that we actually don't want to do that. Uh we might decide that because this um. These are blocks that are large enough that will develop pods of. You know, twenty or more um affordable housing uh units. That we might think this is big enough to be a village, and it might be, or, you know, a neighborhood, and that we. Might decide that this is quite a good way of clustering these uh, the the inclusionary zoning units uh. Uh perhaps we would, in the bylaw, suggest that they be pushed closer to North Pleasant Street, for example, that we. See these as a mutually supportive communities or small communities rather like co-housing communities potentially. Cause indeed, the the early co-housing communities existed largely because they were spun off. By developments such as this, and they were put in the hands of buyers groups who said, we want to do this. And 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 the developers found, well, this is a very easy way of solving my affordable housing problem, I'll give it to this group of people that want to. Um, want to develop their own housing. I don't think we would necessarily do that, but the notion that you can have a successfully spun off. Um, uh, uh, micro-community is actually rather appealing to me, and I think. That would be a good strategy to contemplate how we could. Draft the overlay to cause something like that to happen.
Thank you, Bruce. Jesse?
Thanks, um, yeah, I I agree with the idea that Bruce was just discussing. Just came up in the subcommittee meeting, um but I also wanted to add in one more idea, food for thought, and then I'll apologize to the group, I need to leave early tonight. Um but another um discussion we had was. Although Nate showed, you know, the thirteen blocks of similar four or five-story units to get to that density, we had talked about these. Prop, these these lots being big enough, meaning east-west really. To sort of have a graded approach, meaning closer to um the street side, lower. Housing and then lo- or lower massing, and then as you move west, they get taller and taller potentially, so. The point is the character on driving down the street might not change that much from what it is now. And I think our subcommittee group thought that was a pretty nice possibility, um just just to think about it that way also. Thanks.
Jesse? Um, I raised my hand because I wanted to just briefly chime in. So, um I agree that the area that's identified is. You know, appropriate, it's a self-contained and kind of a natural area. So I think I'm excited, like I think that boundary looks really good, Nate. Um, you were talking about how often to get redevelopment, you need to. Offer three to five times existing density and what the like. Concept that you laid out of the thirteen Mill District buildings. Like, superimposed on that, I think you said would only get us to three times. So, in the spirit of creating a space where some of this could actually be realized. I do think that flexibility and offering the potential to do m- more than, you know, a tripling. Could be important and valuable here. And then I agree that. It seems like scaling up towards one sixteen could make a lot of sense, especially if that. Current buffer that's there is a buffer that is gonna need to be maintained anyway because of wetland. Concerns. Um, and then my other thought about. Just imagining the Mill District there is that if this is primarily student housing. It makes me think that we. Um, should have a less um. We should just require less parking and really, you know, in, like. These are folks who, maybe they have cars, but maybe they could leave that car at home and instead plan on, you know, taking the bus or. Um, walking or biking to campus and that we don't need to. Plan in quite as much dedicated real estate to cars. Or at least create flexibility to exempt that so that they can. Get more housing than is currently offered at the same square footage in the Mill District. Those are my two reactions, and thank you again. Um, let's go to Fred.
Uh, yeah, I wanted to uh pick up and uh something that uh Bruce raised about uh. Uh, having uh. Large numbers of affordable uh housing uh grouped. Which I think makes a great deal of sense and. What I wanted to add here was uh what happened. At North Village when the university decided to rebuild North Village. And they did it uh. Uh with, in my opinion, with uh really uh almost zero uh improvement. And actually considerable destruction. Uh, I. The uh, the North Village Housing Complex. Uh had apartments that were grouped and uh. There were a lot of these apartments where uh there there were actual families. Living in these and these uh groupings became villages. And uh, we actually had uh, it was quite common for. Uh one family to agree to uh look after the kids on such and such a day and another. Uh, family would look after kids on another day and so forth, and they were. And then the university said, okay, uh well, uh, you're all evicted. And uh, they rebuilt it and uh and did it. Uh without observing this principle at all. And uh, uh, as Bruce was talking, I, it this immediately came to mind. This is absolutely something that uh we could address uh if we were to follow through. On the way Nate uh just described this.
Thank you, Fred. Lawrence?
Yeah, I just, I have uh one question, and I'm sorry if I missed this somewhere, either in the materials or in an earlier discussion. Um, but looking at the um, I was comparing the boundaries that you drew uh Nate. With the twenty thirteen proposal. Um, and it, it looks like I I noticing one difference that I wonder if you could speak to. Uh, what's showing up is, I guess, uh lots, five C six, five C seven. Five C sixty, five C nine and five C fifty-nine. Um, are in your boundaries and are included as, it's it's toward toward the northern end of um. Uh North Pleasant Street on the southern end of that, uh I guess westerly strip of the Village Center there. Um. Uh, those, those areas were not included in the twenty thirteen proposal. Uh, but are included here, which in principle I'm not opposed to, but I know that some of those are are historic. Homes up there and um, uh, just wondering. Um, if you could speak to including those rather than excluding those.
Nate, is there any chance you could pull up the map so we could all look at it? Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, so what um Lawrence was mentioning was, you know, these, these properties are larger um historic properties. And so, you know, the overlay, you know, bisects them and has some of the backland, and then there's some homes here. You know, these are, some of it is the, since thirteen, some of these have changed, and so, you know, these are rentals. Um, uh, you know, and and it can move, but some of it is, the idea would be to have as much of a contiguous area as possible. And so, you know, this line, you know, is is following the back property line here. So there's some, you know, reason here to have it, maybe it's pushed back. And it could be that in this area, you know, for instance, in this overlay, we could be really um. We could be, you know, we could have different standards, we could like, you know, say that here. Is three stories, and we could say so two hundred and fifty feet or whatever off the uh in this boundary, we could even just shade a map and say this is only three stories and. You know, this is, could be more, and, you know, so. You know, this could move, but I thought, you know, I I'd rather. Include it and then have, you know, Lawrence, have your questions and discussion and say, well, let's not include it then. Then, you know, the other way, I think it's probably easier to shrink it than expand it. And so, you know, I wouldn't. Want these homes in the overlay, but maybe the back of the property. And, you know, I know some of these homes are historic, but in terms of how they're used and perhaps say what their historic value or significance is. You know, might, so at some point you have to say, is it outweighed by the fact that we could then have a lot more housing? And so, you know, it it. I think it's a good discussion and good question, and, you know, it's not necessarily resolved, you know, here's some older homes up here too. But um, you know, I I just thought it would be a little bit more uh expansive here and and this initial. Uh, boundary, so. And I think the two thousand thirteen was really focusing on existing properties. That had multi-unit overlay, so if that were the case, you know, you draw, you know, it wasn't, to me, this is a North Amherst overlay. It's not a multi-unit property overlay, so that, you know, the two thousand thirteen would have been like, well, we're just doing this, you know. We're just gonna go along these properties, right? We're gonna exclude anything that's not a multi-unit property. And to me, that ends up with an odd shape. And you're you're missed some areas that could have some opportunity, right? For instance. These properties, what if it's that you have a nice, you could get a road in here? But this property's not in the overlay, then you, it might be difficult to cross it with, because of the zoning, so I, you know, um. You know, that's all, I don't, it wasn't like there was a. You know, it can move. Um, you know, we'll say for the affordable, for the affordability piece, I mean, I was actually thinking while everyone was talking that we should say it's fifteen percent in the overlay. Given we're allowing such density. Um, you know, we've often heard is that at twelve percent, there's not enough affordable units to create a massing of them that there's. You know, there's not a good proportion of affordable and non-affordable and different demographics of tenants, and so. You know, if we said fifteen percent and you got two thousand units. You know, you have three hundred affordable units. I mean, that's huge. And so I think that given the. What could be the flexibility of the overlay, you know, having a fifteen percent affordability requirement is not too onerous. I agree, Johanna, that in my, in my example with North Square, I had a lot of parking, and so I've often thought that if. We want to have a better site design and density, we ha- we have to be flexible on parking. And so. You know, I I I agree, I I'm, you know. In my example, you know, you'd have a hundred and fifty units and and they they have a few hundred parking spaces, right? So you almost have like two parking spaces or one and a half per unit or some. You know, so it's, you know, what, so, you know, I just did a gross, you know, kind of not like, you know, just kind of a generic kind of, here's what can fit. To just make sure it's feasible. So, you know, I, I think that. Um, I I would expect a better site design. And so, some of it is with this overlay, I guess the question is, you know, how much do we want to have the developers propose? And the board responds to during permitting, or how much we write into the overlay to know we get what we want. And so, you know. As a site plan review, we'd have difficulty denying things. But maybe there are more conditions or things we'd really wanna write in to be careful, or maybe it's not always a site plan review, maybe something is different, but. You know, I think right now, if we said it's a special permit, it might be. Difficult to get in, but if we had an overlay that had a lot of criteria, maybe a special permit isn't a scary because we've. We've, you know, provided a lot more criteria for a developer to understand and apply to, not, you know, right now, it's just. A special permit with not a lot to go on.
Bruce?
Um, I agree, uh Johanna, with your suggestion of parking, which I think is probably. The the suggestion that we follow the similar principle that we have with U Drive where we. Put it in the hands of the developer with the obligation of creating a management plan so that they actually have to commit themselves and we get to talk about it. I I I after U Drive, I think we hope, and it feels like that's gonna be a good way to do it. Um, so I, I think we should do it the same way again. Um, Nate, I I I think I like the idea of the fifteen percent, because I also like Johanna's suggestion that we. Push for really uh significant uh uh additional elevation as we get closer to west uh uh go west towards uh one sixteen. Uh perhaps that does mean that we can do more than a three-fold uh increase in density, and if we can, then I think we can uh. Extract some benefit from that, and in doing so, create a scale of affordable housing that would be. Um, as I say, noteworthy, I mean, and I think then, and we're talking uh about this. Substantially, let's say, uh student housing, but it's at a scale where it's generating. Uh affordable housing, so it's not just generating housing, but it really is generating specifically housing that's un- answering the goal. That we have to uh uh provide workforce housing and so forth. So it's not just that we're providing housing and hoping. That it's uh can be uh inhabited by long-term residents, I think we're creating. And we can point to the certainty with which we are creating um real housing as well as student housing. Student housing we need, we know it's a problem, we know that the university is created as much as they're probably gonna do in the near term, and so. We have to fill in the gap, and this seems like the way to do it. And and the and the bonus is that we get some uh affordable housing, and if we can do it at fifteen, it's even better to achieve the kind of objective. That I articulated earlier, so. Um, uh, I like a lot of what I've heard from you and from others. Um uh I like a lot of what I've heard from you and from others uh this evening, I think this uh. Seems to be uh uh something that as a North Amherst resident, I'm not really speaking for the people, but I. I've done a fair bit in North Amherst in recent years and I have a sense of the community here. Um I'm sure there's gonna be people who, the moment we think of increasing density and so forth, they're going to be uh. Uh uh wary, but I think uh 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 a measured conversation about this. Uh particularly with what the way we're thinking about it, it should be, I hope, should be. Um eventually well received by the uh community. In North Amherst as well as the community in Amherst itself, because I think this is going to be a benefit to the town. And not an unreasonable burden for the north end of town.
Appreciate that. I know we have received some public comments that have asked that. The densification not jump over North Pleasant Street and this current proposal doesn't, it just stays on that side, so.
Yep, and it's not only stays on that side potentially, but it's it drifts down and away. And because it's a downhill grade and the buildings get high and there's housing, historic housing on the street. Uh it's every, the the dominoes really are working well here and and Lawrence, to your point. I uh there's there's a few houses, historic houses that may get uh moved, um it may get uh taken down. But I know that in previous uh uh developments and so forth, particularly on Sunset Avenue, we. I guess the we there was the uh local historic district commission um. Either encouraged or required the developer to move the houses and they were indeed moved. So I would think that a similar fate might uh be here, but we're not too far from one sixteen, it's not too difficult to move houses. In this area, because we don't have so many big trees and narrow streets and so forth, which is really the impediment to moving houses.
Thanks, Nate, and then Karen.
Sure, yeah, with the affordable units, I was gonna say, um you know, we could also designate areas perhaps off-site where they're built. Um you know, what's interesting is Middlebury is doing something and I've looked at a few developments where they do um. Allow the affordable units to be congregated and what that does is it allows a separate developer to build them. So an affordable housing developer can then come in and build them, whereas with our inclusionary zoning now, the private market, the private developer builds them. And you know, they might not actually, you know, depending on how we're doing this. You know, it could be complicated or it could, it might, you know, it might it might work, but you know, it could be, there could be a benefit to having them. Having designated zones and either the developer helps pay for them or. They work with them, they can hire, say, like a Valley CDC who actually knows how to build affordable units and manage them. Build the units as opposed to then if they're integrated in the projects or in the buildings, it makes it harder to do that and so. There's been a few products I've looked at that I've tried to set up that model to actually then have better affordable units, um so, you know, I it's just. I think it's something to consider, I don't, you know, there's probably pros and cons to it, but um I've looked at, I'm trying to find a few examples where they've allowed this. And it seems like it's worked pretty well, but.
Interesting. Thanks for sharing that, Nate. Karen?
Um yeah, Nate, you said that you need thirteen of these uh Mill North, North uh. Mill Street rectangles and there are only twelve here, is the, does the math still work that you've described? And the other thing is that the historical commission was able to have a little clout because. The houses on Sunset were in the historical commission, that's probably not the case here, but I think. You know, when I, do I have to, do you hear me if I don't? Do I have to turn this down because it keeps clicking? I don't know.
We don't get the clicking, you sound.
I can, oh, it's driving me a little crazy, but the. The fate of this historical building is exactly what we're fighting, it's a. Case of a probably a beautiful historical building and it's gone, the fate of what. We're expecting is gonna happen to all of downtown if we don't really move. And provide enough housing and that is that it got bought up by somebody who realizes that they can make a lot more money. Renting it to students in this location and again, we have no more families and no more possibilities for young faculties to move in. Because students can team up and and nobody can compete rent-wise. So um yeah, that's that's a cautionary tale with these houses that are probably gonna be lost. But I'm excited about this, I think it's a win-win, I think we should pursue it. And um I like, I really like Joanna, your idea. That we don't have to have that much parking because it is in such a great location, there's probably great bus service. And it could be known that this is just an area where you, you know, we're trying to encourage more and more public transportation. Um so, yeah, I'm excited, let's let's go for it.
Great. All right, any board member comments? Otherwise, I would say let's go to public comment on this discussion and then talk about next steps. So any members of the public wanna make a comment on? The overlay for existing apartment complexes? Okay, not seeing any public comment, Nate, let's talk about next steps, what do you, yeah, what do you think makes sense here?
Yeah, again, kind of like the ADU, if there's any comments, send them to me, whether it's as track changes or just an email. And I think we will bring this back at, you know, successive meetings and try to. Keep working it, uh refine it, I mean, if you think of an idea of a case study or a project you like, send it to me. You know, I I think there are a lot of pieces here and so I just would wanna make sure that, you know, we've. We've had, you know, we've had enough consideration and due diligence, so it's easy enough to say, sure, let's have, say, six stories in the west and three here, but. At some point, maybe we have to start, you know, putting pen to paper again and saying, okay, what does that really mean? And then, you know, in aggregate, we can get this density, but if it's on a parcel by parcel basis, what does that mean and so. You know, I think there's, you know, and if if we put the affordable units somewhere, does that mean that one parcel gets? Can't triple the density or whatever it is and so, you know, there's all those considerations, I think I'll just, you know, just keep working on it and. Um, you know, and. Uh yeah, and you know, like provide any comments and so I I, yeah, I think this area is is worthwhile to pursue and study and it, you know, I'm not trying to fast track it necessarily. So it could be something that we work on for a few months and we really get there, the housing production plan. Uh that the consultant's working on for the town hopefully will be done in June, you know, whether or not that has ideas, they're starting to come up with. More of a draft document, so I'll share that and staff will look at it when it's ready, so maybe there's things there that can help this, so. Um you know, I feel like with the university drive, we had some zoning amendments a few years ago. I feel like we have an understanding, I staff has an understanding of how to write some of this, I agree with flexible parking. I think it's trickier in terms of, you know, how flexible do we want, like I said, our design guidelines or our density or our dimensional standards. Uh knowing that if a site plan review, we have limited ability to deny it and so, you know, some of it is just kind of what's the right language or. Right approach, permitting approach, but so if you have ideas, like I said, send them to me.
Great, thanks so much, Nate. And Karen, is this a new hand or is it a legacy hand?
Oh, sorry, legacy.
No problem. Um all right, well, thanks for the conversation, everybody, um. I propose we move on to our fifth agenda item on tonight's agenda, which is old business. Um are there any topics that were not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to our meeting?
No.
No, okay, great. Um any new business? And topics not anticipated within the last forty-eight, no?
No.
Great, are there any Form A and R subdivision applications?
No.
Upcoming ZBA applications?
We do have an upcoming ZBA application um that. I think Nate and I are both gonna talk about this a little bit, so. Um on March twenty-seventh, the ZBA is going to open a public hearing for property at seventy-two Curtis Place. Um they are seeking a. Special permit for a non-owner occupied duplex here, so this um. Property, it's really, it's it's to reconstruct the two-family property. Um there was an existing two-family property there that had. Uh two units with seven bedrooms, four in one, three in the other, they had a fire. Um in February of twenty twenty-four, so a little over a year ago. Um and that building has been taken down and they're back. Um so this is a pre-existing non-conforming. Nate, take it away.
Yeah, you know, so it was it was an historic house um that was visible from Belcher Town Road, although it was on Curtis Place and so. You know, it was a front-end gable house uh that had a fire and it was, you know, uh the commission allowed it to be torn down, given the condition it was in. And they're proposing to put a duplex in the neighborhood, a new construction, I'll share my screen quickly. You know, the ZBA can use the the da- um designer view standard, so here is just a, you know, it's just a big rectangle. Um, you know, of the building, the previous building, historic building had, you know, was a different layout, here's a site plan and so. You know, the property is at the end of a cul-de-sac, here's Route Nine. And so originally, it was, you know, a historic house that was here, you know, with the front gable here facing the street. Now it'll, you know, the back of the house will face it, I guess, you know, what I found is that it's a. You know, the trash is right here, right in the front as you pull in, they have a fence here between the two. Uh front entry decks, there's, you know, what they're doing now is they're um. Putting the parking here. You know, so you pull in and, you know, essentially there's, you know, four parking spaces on either side with a with a pole light here. And it just, it no longer seems like, you know, a a residential home, it's. Seems pretty commercial and so the planning board could, you know. Um could ask, could ask to, you know, be presented this by the applicant or we could. You know, agree by consensus or take a vote to encourage the ZBA to. Employ the designer view principles and, you know, just take a thorough look at this in terms of its impact on the neighborhood and so, you know. This is your first preview of it, um it has to go to the conservation commission as well. You know, it is a two-family, maybe we think, oh, it's not that big of a deal, I just, you know, it is a a bit of a change from what was there to what's being proposed and so. You know, the board has the ability to, you know, make a recommendation or would like to review it again, it's kind of your decision.
Well, what do you all think? Is this a project that we wanna, that we wanna see? Karen's nodding her head yes.
Let me just, I would say, let me just look quickly, when the ZBA is actually reviewing this.
March twenty-seventh.
Okay.
My thinking is that we, it does seem like a pretty different. Setup for what I imagine all the other homes are single-family homes and have a pretty different. Setup in terms of orientation and. Parking arrangements and whatnot, so my inclination would be to go ahead and take a look at it.
I agree with that.
Okay. Sound good, Nate?
Yeah, I mean, so we could, March nineteenth for the planning board, you know, we'll be busy, we're having, well, it may or may not be, we're having. Four twenty-two Amity Street to come back, you know, that's the one down um by U Drive and Amity Street, we've reviewed it. Uh you know, we've looked over the findings and conditions and everything and really it could just be a vote if they are granted a variance the week before. Um there's the uh project down by Atkins by Archipelago, so that's coming on the nineteenth. And that needs site plan review and special permits by the planning board and so. The point of the hearing on the nineteenth is to see if the planning board likes the project enough to hear it. And allow special permits for it to move forward and then Archipelago would provide more information and so. You know, I'm not expecting at all that that would be, you know, complete that night, actually, I think it would be continued for a number of weeks and we probably spent a number of meetings on it. And then we could have Curtis Place come and, you know, slate the applicant in for a fifteen or twenty-minute presentation at some point. Uh and then, you know, the idea would be then have feedback to give to the ZBA prior to their hearing.
Do you think the ZBA will get it done in one night or will they also? Will it be an iterative process?
Um it might take two hearings, it's they usually have multiple hearings in an evening, it would just be, you know, it would, I would feel. Remiss if the if the board pushed it off for a meeting, you wanted to hear it and the ZBA concluded on the twenty-seventh and there wasn't an opportunity. For the board to see it if you wanted to, that's all. I guess I can talk to Jacinta.
Make the nineteenth a busy evening if we added it to that.
Yeah, you know, if 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 the planner, if we think that it would be continued, then maybe it'd be the following planning board meeting, so I'll coordinate with staff and see what the best approach will be.
That sounds great, thanks Nate. All right, any upcoming SPPs? Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I I just wanted to support your suggestion, Johanna, that we do uh invite for the next meeting, for the nineteenth. Um I think the way you and Nate discussed managing the agenda or that the agenda can be managed. Because the uh I I think it will be, it it should be. Uh five minutes with uh U Drive Amity unless, I mean, the only reason we didn't do it last time was because. It was the possibility that something might crop up in the the finalization, was it of the Concom or something? And let's assume that nothing crops up, then we should do what we intended and vote it, so there's virtually no time there. And I think if uh if the, with the Archipelago project, if the intention is that it's going to be continued, we should do what you did tonight and say. Let's uh put a sixty-minute uh discussion time on it and then a fifteen-minute time on the uh. I mean, we typically haven't done this with our meetings and it's not to be critical of Doug, we haven't really needed to. As much, you know, we've been prepared to give these things as much as time as they take, but uh um. But with continued hearings, we probably don't have to do that and and with this one, I think we can basically exercise a. A recommendation uh that that in person, that they uh that the ZBA uh, you know, exercise their. Their 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 authority and intelligence on and apply the design standards to it and maybe give them a few minutes of help on that if we think we can. And I, but I think being conscious of where the uh, what the neighborhood is like. It also gives us time to drive out there, I don't know that we necessarily need to have a site visit on this, I think that might be a bit too much, but I think some of us might. Uh be able to drive out there and and take some photographs and just circulate them. To Nate, he can circulate them to the rest of us, I think it might be helpful and I don't think it it takes more than fifteen minutes, so or shouldn't. Let's make sure it doesn't, so I support doing it at the next meeting.
Great, all right. Any other board member questions or comments on that? Great, all right, then moving on to the next agenda item, are there any upcoming SPP, SPR or SUB applications?
Well, I mentioned the nineteenth, so there's the Atkins and, you know, four twenty-two is coming back. Uh Emmer soccer estimated an application to put a a shed at Plum Book Recreation Area, it's. You know, very, it's pretty minor, but that it needs a plan review, um and I think that's that's it uh for now.
Great, thanks Nate. Um all right, our tenth item is planning board committee and liaison reports, so. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Uh nothing to report, um we may have not talked about Trump anymore, so I'll be quiet.
Thanks, Bruce. Uh all right, Jesse isn't here to report on the housing subcommittee, does someone else who participates in that wanna give a brief report?
I think we basically did in the course of the discussion, um Karen, Fred, would you agree?
Yes.
Okay, great, and then design review board report.
We didn't meet, we'll meet on the twenty-fourth.
Excellent, all right. Um next item on the agenda is the report of the chair, I have none, uh report of staff.
You know, I'll give my usual, the um Dodson and Flinker is working on the downtown design standards. They're trying to formalize, you know, goals and vision and actually start to get, you know, a draft plan or outline together, there was a working group meeting this week. And so, and I expect that there'll be some draft documents available probably in the next few weeks for, oh, maybe a month for the public. Um the housing production plan is also moving forward and so, you know, that's something the planning board will need to vote on and actually approve before we send it to the state, so. I think that maybe in in April, we'll have um the. Almost a completed needs assessment, which the planning board looked at and then we'll have draft goals, objectives and strategies that'll come back probably in. The early April meeting for the board to discuss and provide comments to the consultant and so, you know, those are two things that are happening. the early April meeting for the board to discuss and provide comments to the consultant. And so, you know, those are two things that are happening.
Great, thank you. All right, I think that brings us to the end of our agenda, so, um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, so moved and, and well done, Johanna.
Thank you, all right. The time is eight forty-three PM. Uh, thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank.
Bye.
Hey, good night.